The teachers were saying to me, the students were saying, "What? We're having a test in science." Like, they aren't used to it, unfortunately, which is not good. So, seeing that change will maybe, you know, have an impact on the way that they approach the MCAS for the first time for science in fifth grade.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Thank you. So, first, to all of you, I'm sorry for being late and to all of my colleagues, and I didn't get my texts because I turned my phone down so it wouldn't ring during here.
I was working, we were driving and...
Yes, no, I wasn't. Anyway, so I'm sorry about that. And I do want to say that the acknowledge the high-stakes testing and the impact on everybody, on kids, some on parents, but on kids and on teachers. And to just really say, you know, a shout-out to all the teachers and support staff who have been and are doing this and great improvements are made. And I just take my hat off to you and to everyone else. Also, the other, you know, I always start with the strengths. The shout-out to you about making the data come alive. Once again, you did that, and that's really appreciated. I mean, you all did that, but I know you organized a lot of this, and that's great. I mean, the time flew by for me. It was very interesting. A couple of specific questions. I didn't see a conclusion regarding math on page 18 when you talked about some of the other conclusions that you drew from the data near the beginning, so I was curious about that. Not a, not a big deal, but just curious.
We really focused on science for this presentation because the majority of the MCAS tests were science. We were really waiting for more results from the states, from ELA and math, PARC, to really draw a bigger conclusion about math and ELA at large.
Which I guess, if I can just keep going, Mike?
Yeah, please.
Which I guess speaks to my point about the high-stakes math testing, is because we want to look at the whole child, yet this is about the high-stakes testing and what the state... So, anyway, that's my editorial comment about that, because I would be curious how our kids are doing about math. So, anyway. I saw an incredible amount of progress, as Superintendent Gormly pointed out. There were some huge increases in a good way, but I also saw some up-and-down patterns that were concerning across the board, just some years, from 2014, 2015, or it went up, it went down, and then went up again, it went down, over the last four years. So, I was just a little, you know, pointing that out, and I think I saw it in every subject. So, I don't really know what that means. There's no way to answer that. I think there's been tremendous improvement. But I'm curious as to if there's any reasons for, like, even just changes from 2014 to 15, or 13 to 14. You may not be able to answer that.
Well, a lot of it, I think, has to do with the fact that there are different cohorts of students. So, it's not like we're following one group of students from year to year and how they're doing. So, the numbers can differ. So, in one year, we might have a lot more students, especially when you look at the subgroups, too. That one year, we might have a large group of students with disabilities. And then also, the different disabilities that they might have are going to be...
That's right.
There's going to be a whole different range, you know? So, that's, I think, has to do with a lot of the fluctuations that you see in the subgroup data.
So, if I could just ask, maybe that's something that could be noted in here at the bottom, because when folks look at just a page of this, that's what's... So, it might be helpful to add that in there.
And would one of you address to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point about some of the students aren't in isolation, they're in three of the subgroups?
Ah.
So, does somebody want to address that?
A student could be...
Yes.
...in the economically disadvantaged group, and they could also be African-American, black, and they could also be in the, a student with disabilities.
That's right.
They can appear in multiple categories, or they could possibly appear in one category. And then, we also have, with the students with disabilities, the progressing and emerging, the alternative assessment is also included with that data, too. So, there's a lot of different things going on, and then, again, we're looking at different cohorts for different years, which can fluctuate.
Right. So, maybe those could be little footnotes at the bottom. That might be helpful. And then, my last thing was just about the STEM program. I really liked that, how specific you were about the peers. It was sixth grade, 230 students, and I like that, like, how many students? How's it increasing? The time that it's increasing, because STEM has been a big priority of this administration. And I think the more data about that, it's really helpful. When you say the STEM program's growing, it's really helpful to know in grade six is 230 students who are not taking it. So, I would like to keep seeing more of that, Dr. Spalding, as you include that data. So, thank you.
We have, I was going to say, and I promise I won't, again, for the viewing public, the initiative of this school committee and the administration implementing the STEM for second, third, fourth grade, but we have the silent member of the team over there at the middle school advocating K-12 for science and STEM at the middle school and the I-STEM. And to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, proportionately, to see the increase from one I-STEM class to now every grade level and the number of children, it's really, really powerful. And the response that I get, you know, a father said to me, you know, "I'm just so happy, one I-STEM class at the sixth grade." I called Dr. Spalding and said, "That's, that's, that's child's interpretation of the entire Pierce School and the other periods of the day, that one I-STEM class at the sixth grade."
So, for those of you who are wondering why I'm sitting here so silently, I am, I have shifted from being in the spotlight to being a science groupie. And so, I just follow the group wherever they present and cheer them on silently. But I just want to say, you know, sitting here, and I'm a little under the weather, so I was trying to limit my, my words as well. But the, just having sat through this presentation and, you know, glancing over at Bernadette for a moment, and Kristi for a moment, and Amy Tomway over there where you were sitting. And I remember when Bernadette was maybe three days on the job, and she and Kristi and I were over at Cunningham, and, and this money was going to come through potentially for the advancement budget and sorting out how many units are we going to field test and what's reasonable for a teacher to take on in one year, and how can we roll them in, so that eventually we have... And so, to hear, you know, to sort of just have that flashback and hear what's happening there is just so exciting. And my, my favorite graph that didn't make it into the presentation, but I will, I will quote from it anyways, is, is for the first time in five years, that Pierce Middle School CPI was above the state. And that's pretty impressive. If you look at the other years, it's, in the state, as Kristi alluded to earlier, that's sort of been the stable, so it kind of accounts for changes in student population and things like that, because it's such a large group. And so, when you see the, the stableness sort of of the state and you sort of think about it in relative terms, the first time in five years to be above the state with the CPI feels pretty good. That's why I'm here.
It's going to be added to the presentation.
Oh, fantastic.
Ms. Bagley.
I think this is really exciting news. I mean, as someone that's, you know, we've been following this data for a few years, and those science numbers in particular have been stagnant, which is why we've been pumping some money in that area. And I think that that's showing, even though it's just the beginning, that there's, we're making progress, a huge amount of progress in just a short time, so you should all be commended upon that. Sometimes, numbers are a little bit boring, but this is, I think, like, if you really look into them, how really exciting it is, and already, you're looking at those areas where we need to improve on, and that's wonderful. I just had a couple of technical questions. You talked about the, the MCAS alternate. Is that something new this year, where those students are put in automatically? You said they're automatically put in the needs improvement area?
Failing. The failing.
Failing in needs improvement?
No, that's actually been a practice at the state.
Okay. So, it's always been that way? So, it's, it shouldn't affect looking at past numbers into this number?
Right.
But, but to that point, we're going to petition as a school district, and I'm going to as a superintendent. For these children who have to take this alternative assessment, it's not fair for them to make all of that work with their teachers, to come up with the portfolio, and in behalf of any educational institution, no matter how well they do, to be classified as failing. And so, when they go to conferences, this is brought up, but we're going to lobby at the state. It's not the correct terminology for children with special needs to be classified as failing.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because, I mean, I just, I mean, I think it's great that they send home something different for their parents, which is what, at least they're doing that much. But I think to, if we're looking to, you know, and we're certainly looking to improve their performance on, on their test as well, but to have something to judge that by is, it just, it just seems a little unfair. So, that's my first question. And then, the second question is, you talked a little bit about the, our, one elementary school that wasn't, we didn't see the trend we wanted to do. And I know we talked about some after-bow programs. I think that's great. But also, I was looking at the scores in terms of even the lowering of the, the advanced category and seeing, wanting to see that go up. So, what other strategies would you look at? Are we looking at, because, you know, as you pointed out, I think, Burnett, that, you know, we're looking at, we're not looking at the same kids going year to year, year. So, these are different classes, so it's hard. It's not the same data we're looking at. But, and it's not always teaching that was relating to it, but are we looking at sharing some of the, the things we're trying at different schools?
We absolutely are. So, similarly to what I mentioned earlier about teachers being really interested in the engagement strategies that were used last year at the Pierce for subgroups, I've also been sharing with other schools, the, the work that, well, specifically, the Colicott team had done last year around writing in that content area of science, because they worked really hard at it, and they were proud of the work that they did, and it paid off, not just in the MCAS data, but in their day-to-day work in science with these students and their ability to write about what they were learning. So, yes, those things have been shared, and they, you know, teachers are excited to get the time to work together with, with me and with other curriculum coordinators, the reading and the math coordinator as well, and tying it all together and making sense of it. Another thing I'd like to point out, too, is that because it's the first time that teachers are implementing the curriculum, you know, they're learning it, they're learning it themselves, and they're working endless amounts of hours to prep these materials and read, you know, read about how this activity is actually going to go and what it will look like for their students, and looking at student work and making observations of their students. But it's a lot to learn, and we think that in the years to come, when teachers become more confident and comfortable in their ability to teach this material and this new curriculum, they'll be better equipped to differentiate for not just struggling learners, but for their high achievers as well. And hopefully, we'll see an increase in that advanced category through that.
Right. My last thing is just, and I'm glad that Dr. Spalding's here. I don't know if anybody else is looking for an invitation to that STAR Lab to check it out.
Going tomorrow.
Certainly, you know, I'm certainly on that list. I didn't get to check it out at the MFA last year, so...
Can I just say that I did at the MFA, and it's better to go, it's, it's better to go during the day than after you've had a couple of drinks and high heels at the Celebrate for Milton.
Well, that should be saved tomorrow during the day.
Yeah.
I had a hard time getting out of there.
Thank you.
Okay. Little insight. Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I can wait. I just want to make one more comment before somebody else.
Go ahead.
You're welcome.
Just, I was looking at, I had two things. We talked a little bit about kids' perception, Ms. Gormly's point about the, the alternative and how project, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on my words there, but you know what I mean. And then, how do we talk about the impact on kids, about this high-stake testing to kids that are very aware that they're not doing as well as other kids? And so, I was just curious in terms of maybe we need to think about the advancement budget or other budgets, about professional development, for teachers to feel more comfortable about talking about multiple intelligences with kids and talking about what this means. Because I know from kids in my life that when one does better than another on a high-stakes test, it feels really hard. The kids talk about their scores. It is definitely out there, and then it leads into the SAT scores and, you know, blah, blah, blah. So, I'm just sort of putting that out there in terms of thinking, you know, about the whole child. And then, the other last thing I wanted to say was, I went, I just went across all the towns that, you know, we're, we're on here, and we're holding our own. There are some towns, like Brookline, no, not just to call them out, but we're doing better than Brookline. And Brookline is a fairly good, sound educational system, and, you know, there are this, whatever. But we're doing, we're holding our own compared to these other towns, and I'm very impressed. So, that's it. Done.
Dr. Donahue.
Thank you. I'd like to say, start by saying, "Thank you." I thought that was an excellent presentation. I thought it was a reasonably concise presentation, given the breadth of the data, and I appreciate that. A couple of comments, one, one specific question that I'm not sure you'll be able to answer. So, I, I think, as a whole, we've taken the appropriate conclusions away from this, that the, the achievement gaps that we have are, are closing, and they're closing in tremendous fashion once we get to the high school. But they, they do still exist at, at other levels, and your, your conclusions and your next steps are, I think, perfectly targeted to addressing those. My second comment, I greatly appreciate the comparison data to our comparable or not-so-comparable towns. I think it makes it, it's very, very helpful to, to see where we are relative to them. My third comment, building off my colleague's comments earlier, I think an added component in future presentations that would be helpful would be, if possible, evaluating our, our cohorts as cohorts. So, not just looking at this year's eighth-grade class versus last year's eighth-grade class and the year before, and the year before, and the year before, but looking at this year's eighth-grade class versus how they did in fifth grade, and this year's 12th-grade class versus how they did in eighth grade and fifth grade, to hopefully see expected growth along those lines. My fourth comment was, I, I think, one of the leads in this story that was buried was, as you pointed out, the, the CPI at Pierce has, has increased impressively over the past several years. It is, it, it's still lower than the elementary and the high school levels, but it, it's done tremendously over the past three years, and I think that, that's caused to be excited. I, I'm very excited about these, these graphs, looking at our achievement gaps broken down by different subgroups. And my second question, because the hour is getting late, is sort of, is looking at the achievement gaps at the elementary school, I, I notice they, they move extremely closely in parallel. And I, I didn't know if that is because, as was brought up earlier, we have, it's a smaller pool of students, and they're in multiple different cohorts, so you're really, it's, you're sort of looking at the same group of students over, but graphically represented differently? Or if there's some other reason that, that you can think for that, and you may want to address?
I, I think that what you just said is true, that many of our students are falling into multiple subgroup categories, so we are looking at their data in a few different groups. So, that does, to me, explain some of the reason why they do remain somewhat similar. But, again, that the strategies that we'll use for specific subgroups will be beneficial for, for all students and for all subgroups going forward.
Great.
Well, thank you. Just a couple of things for me. In terms of context, it's, it's true, I think, that these tests were taken at the end of the second year of the deployment of advancement resources. And is it fair to say, and this may be a question for Vee or for the superintendent, is it fair to say that we should expect to see a lag between the deployment of resources and a trend showing an increase in scores based on that deployment of resources? I mean, that's what strikes me in this, that one year may not make a trend, but if you have the resources in place now, there may be a lag between seeing, seeing a real pop in results?
Yes, I, I agree with that. I think that it's, it will take time to see the, you know, the big overall results based on the materials that we actually have in classrooms, because the cohort, you know, we will hopefully be seeing continual progress, but really, the cohort that will, at the elementary level at least, have the full effect of what has been in place for the past couple of years and for the years going forward, I would have to do the math quickly, but it wouldn't be for a few years.
Right.
You know, it would be our current first graders. And even those current first graders, but those would be the ones that would get, you know, new curriculum units all year, every year, from grade two till grade five. But even then, some of those units in second grade would be the first go at it for the teacher, which is great, and it's good, and it's, but it's, it would still the first year that the teacher would be implementing it. So, keeping that in mind really is important, I think.
And the same at the middle school. You have only implemented...
We are fully implemented now, and so, our current eighth graders had all-new units in seventh grade, and will have all-new units in eighth grade. But I can actually speak a little bit to what Bernadette was saying about the change that happens over time as teachers get more comfortable with these units. So, even within the last year, I can see how the teachers have adapted the curriculum that they tried last year for the first time to better meet the needs of the students this year. So, there's a whole lot of things that are already different based on their experiences last year that I think are going to be a, a much stronger experience for our current eighth graders over the students we had last year. So, I think that part is happening. But I also know, already from the beginning of the school year, we've had, both at the eighth grade and the sixth grade, so this references the fifth grade experience, teachers commenting on students coming into their classrooms with new knowledge that they hadn't come in with before. So, they're starting a lesson, and they're saying, "Wow, kids were raising their hands, talking about sedimentary rocks and these things from elementary school," and I've never had that happen before. Or in the eighth grade this year, there were some things around heat that the eighth graders were talking about that they learned in seventh grade, that they said, "For the first time, I'm not teaching this concept for the very first time. It's a review." So, that's, that's actually exciting to hear. And we, we are looking a little bit at our pre-test data. This is, last year was the first year that we actually administered pre-tests. We'd had common assessments for a couple of years, but this was the first time that we actually looked at growth of individual students and across the subgroups. Thanks, and this year, thanks to Vee, who's built us these amazing Google Docs, that we'll be able to get the data much more quickly than me hand-entering and counting and things like that. But that data alone is also showing us that in some of those pre-test questions, kids have a lot more prior knowledge than they had coming in the previous year. So, there are things happening. It's slow, and I think over time, that will continue to get better, but we're starting to see it even now. So, that's exciting.
So, what does strike me as a trend, though, is the performance of the high school. And similar to what Ms. Bagley-Jones said, if you look at the, at the high school and at the CPA, CPI data at the high school over the last four years, compared to the high school's high-performing peers, Milton High School is competitive with those high-performing peers, based on these scores. Now, this is a subset, and this is a limited view, but based on this limited view, Milton High School, it's clear, is competitive with those high-performing peers. So, that's gratifying to see, and, and hopefully, that'll play out in the, the additional scores we get. And then, I just had one final question, and that wasn't really a question, that was really more of an observation. One question, and that is, on the, on the, the subgroup gaps with respect to science, and, you know, some of them, we talked about, the, the, all of the groups are, all of the groups are going up, and so, you don't see as much of a difference in the, in the, in the, or an improvement in the gap? Do we think, and again, it's early, and I know this is, it's probably too early to make this judgment, but I'll ask you anyway. Do you, do you think that that, that gap issue with respect to science is a science issue or an achievement gap issue? And that may be too simplistic and too binary a question, but that's what struck me. I mean, if, if we're thinking about resources, do we put more resources into science or more resources into the gap issues? That's, I don't know if that's entirely clear, but that's...
I, I think I understand your question, but I, I think it's a little of both. I think that the different subgroups have different needs, and while they all would benefit from some similar strategies, some students are coming into school with vastly different experiences, to Superintendent Gormly's point, than some of their peers. And that's what we need to focus on with those students in particular, is backfilling their information, giving them those experiences within the school day and beyond, to ensure that they have the ability to perform at their highest level. Other students have different needs that we need to address. So, I think that, I think it's a combination of both. I think that there's much to do with science content when it comes to subgroups, but there's also much to do with specific needs of specific students. And what we really need to do is identify who the students are and what their needs are.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
I think it was an outstanding presentation.
It was.
Very, very valuable. And I have to compliment all the administrators here, all the teachers they represent. And to hear this tonight, I know we've run over our time, but the community has to appreciate the dedication, the work, the talent, the expertise, how you use the data, and how you're driving instruction, and the importance of student achievement. And I couldn't be prouder. And I think this is one of the best presentations that I've ever observed in the Milton Public Schools. In closing, to the point that we're anxiously waiting and for the community to know, the viewing public, years ago, we used to get the MCAS in the late fall, and then it was wonderful. They perfected it, DESI, and we got our MCAS data before school started. PARC, we said among ourselves, "Happy Holidays," is coming on December 23rd, and we'll get some of our embargo data in November. But you can see their faces. We're anxiously looking, again, we took it on, we used the technology, and we're looking anxiously, Vee, you eloquently just joining us, really summarize the feelings of the district. We're looking to that data, and it's everywhere you read. It was a more difficult test, and students took it on technology. But I would just close by saying, this is the world that we're preparing our students to go into, whether it's their teacher certification test, their law boards, or their medical boards. We want every single Milton Public School child, student, graduate, to be able to go out and compete in this world. And that's a goal from pre-K through 12 in the Milton Public Schools. Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you very, very much. And next, I'll go on to, very briefly, passing out folders. While these are being distributed, I would like to speak to our diversity policy. The Milton Public Schools Committee has a diversity policy. We have gone on a listserv, we've communicated with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and we're looking for other districts to compare our diversity policy to, as a result of our diversity policy examining all of their policies. The policy calls for before October 15th of every year, for the superintendent to make a report. This report has grown from a brief, brief reference to the diversity initiatives to school committee members asking for a tremendous amount of data. So, what I've put in your packet is all of the data that you have asked for over the years, a data presentation, which we're not going to present to you tonight, but a data presentation for you to go over, and you can ask questions about it at future meetings or call me directly. Very briefly, if I might, Chairman Zulus, the Milton School Committee created a diversity policy in 2006. The school committee's diversity policy affirms the importance of diversity within the Milton Public Schools, student body, staff, and community. The topic of diversity is valued, discussed, celebrated, and highlight, highlighted in our school committee and across all aspects of our school district. Through the analysis of both our internal student assessment and external testing, as you could see tonight, we analyzed the data to identify proficiency gaps among our subgroups. These subgroups include, which you understood tonight, children with special needs, children whose families have identified as economically disadvantaged, and African-American, black children. We further examine our student data by gender and years in the district. The school committee administration have prioritized closing the achievement gap, gap and proficiency gaps as one of their three advancement initiatives. Our district examines diversity within our athletic teams, programs, clubs, activities, graduation rates, SATs, and AP achievement, and college attendance. Our goal is to see our group, this is important, our goal is to see our subgroups' participation and achievement mirror that of the majority population. Our administration works collaboratively on these issues, once, working with Citizens for Diverse Milton. Citizens for Diverse Milton are a group of citizens who meet regularly with central office, and we discuss issues around diversity. As a result of this partnership, every one of our schools has a diversity committee made up of parents and teachers, and at the high school, the diversity committee includes students. Our administration works hard to expand our recruiter and recruiting and hiring practices so that we can work toward the goal of diversifying our stats, staff, to match the percentage of our student body in relation to gender and race. This year's Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan worked collaboratively and led the efforts with our principals and administrators to increase the pool, in our pool, the number of candidates of color, and, again, discussing every one of our appointments with a goal of... in each one of our schools to diversify our staff. I also asked each of our principals, as asked in your diversity policy, a highlight from their efforts last year, and it's very poignant to me, the range of initiatives. If you attended Celebrate Milton last week, last Saturday, you'll know that the Community Builder Awards this year, I'm very proud, as I'm sure you are proud, that last year, Milton High School's Diversity Committee-sponsored, 50 years later, why we struggle for civil rights is still relevant, and that was recognized as one of the Community Builder Awards, as was the Cunningham Schools' Diversity Committee project around integrating literature around diversity into all grades. The PS Middle School is involved in a grant, and the PS Middle School math teachers spent a week in professional development, dealing around access and equity for math for all students targeting subgroups. I am very proud to tell you that the Tucker Elementary School is in a partnership with Harvard University's Graduate School of, around research and analysis of the promise of interested schools. Last year, our teachers had professional development, and this year, we're partnering with interns and graduate students from Harvard to examine our preschool programs and discuss issues around access. The Collyclot, One Book, One School program, I think, is probably one of the most powerful programs in the Milton Public Schools. Again, led by parents and teachers, identifying books around diversity and issues that impact the population of the Collyclot School, and really integrated into every aspect of the school. And at the Glover School, Nurse Maureen LeBlanc wrote an MFE grant around children, medical issues with children with special needs, and implemented those books in the district. In closing, as your diversity policy states, the Milton Public Schools' reflect and nurture as one of its five core values a respect for human differences, including race, cultural, and/or linguistic background, religion, gender, socioeconomic status, learning styles, physical disabilities, diversity of viewpoint. That's from your own policy. So again, every year, we report out, and some years, we spend the time we spent tonight on the presentation around all of the data. But as I said to the policy subcommittee, it should be gratifying to you that we go to this data all the time. Issues come up around diversity, we don't have to say which presentation was that. We have this data, and we continue to add to it and refine it every year.
Well, I want to thank the superintendent and administration for complying with our policy and delivering this report prior to October 15th. This is our last meeting before October 15th. And perhaps what we'll do is allow the committee members to have some time to digest what's in the report and put an agenda item on for the next meeting, perhaps, for any questions that may arise from the review of the report. But thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And in closing, Member Bagley-Jones had asked me, and I was prepared at the last meeting, but didn't get in happenings to a report out on crew. Crew in the Milton Public Schools had grown to a winter and a spring sport, and in the off-season, there was some training in preparation for the spring. And so you, the viewing public, understands we partner with an apponset crew rowing club because the purchase of the shells and the equipment is so costly. This has been, along with rugby and swim, a success story for Milton Public Schools and the community of Milton High School and the town. And so I was approached last year that we reduced the cost, Mr. Pavlichek, from $700 to $650 for crew. And so the rowing club asked if, and asked the really high school principal and the athletic director, we're going to have spring crew, but in the fall, they wanted to build more of a community in the town of Milton around crew. And so what they're doing is, it's a club. Like you have, I guess, your children are in ice hockey.
In AU.
Yes, they're in other, I'm not being an athlete, thank you. They're in other club activities in sports that they have interest in. And so what they asked was, if our students now are paying a fee to be in a club in the fall, and students from other public parochial and private schools are in the club. And so in the spirit of full disclosure, I want you to know that I'm looking at that this fall, watching how much, how many students from parochial and private schools are in the club because they're using ergs in our school. And I agreed to do that. And what I've said was, we have to reexamine this at the end of the year, and we're the majority number of children, students, Milton High School students, and what kind of community interest was there, should we revert back to next year being a fall and a spring sport. I want you to know, Principal Jett was very supportive of this initiative. I have to defer to the high school principal and the athletic director sometimes. And so I did defer to them in this, but I want to assure you that Ms. Bagley-Jones brought up a topic that we're looking at all the time, and we'll meet with the rowing community and survey the parents and the students at the end of this season. But it is something that's being looked at and examined.
Thank you.
Briefly, at the last meeting, I didn't bring this up, but I want to recognize publicly, we were all invited, and many of us attended. Pat Desmond, the editor and the owner of the Milton Times, for the last two years, has had an event that she recognizes a Milton citizen who gives of themselves above and beyond. And she was an unbelievable hostess, and she had this event, and I'm sure you join me in congratulating Eddie Baker. So Eddie Baker is a Milton citizen who contributes the athletics section, to the athletics section of the Milton Times, and he is an advocate for all that's best in the town of Milton. I'm sure you join me.
Yeah.
And very special joining in that night. She was a very humble and modest host, but Pat Desmond and the Times are celebrating their 20th anniversary this year, and so she joined the two events. She was very private in her not wanting to be recognized, but her, and big round of applause for the Milton Times reporter here with us tonight, who led all of the employees with yellow roses. And my phrase is that Pat Desmond was a woman before her time. Time, no pun intended. And as I wrote to her, what she does for the community of Milton and the Milton Public Schools, there's no way to say thank you. Celebrate Milton, many of you went last Sunday to the PS school, and I've shared with you the two Community Builder Awards. We should be very, very proud that two Milton programs were recognized. I want to remind the viewing public and you, and if it's all right, I invited to Citizen Speak Milton High School student, Michael Sullivan, who has a project going to accept in every school lobby, American flags that are tattered, and he's going to appropriately dispose of those flags. He's going to come and share with you at the next meeting. We're in our second day of PCG, the Special Education Program Review Consulting Firm, doing focus groups of staff, school committee members, and parents. They'll again be in the Milton Public Schools tomorrow. I'm proud to tell you, in response to our request for parents who are interested, the CPAC tonight had their own focus group, and every parent who wanted to meet with PCG was able to in two different focus groups. The response has been phenomenal of the groups going in and out for the last two days. They'll be spending three days in the next month in the Milton Public Schools observing classrooms, and we look with anticipation and eagerness to their report. Thursday night, I want to recognize a legend in the Milton Public Schools, Bill Bano, who has taught in the Milton Public Schools and teaches our future problem solving, is going to be recognized by the Friends of the Blue Hills, honoring his unit around Lyme disease, along with Deborah Felton, who is the director at Fuller Village, who will also be recognized. Reminder to parents, Friday is a professional development day for all of our teachers. You heard the program alluded to tonight, from dawn to dusk, they'll all be in targeted professional development. And Monday, no school. Science for Scientists, would you circle on your calendars, from 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturday, October 17th, you can bring clothing and electronics to the Collyclot Cunningham. All credit to Ms. Driscoll, a Cunningham parent, who ran this at Cunningham next year, last year. The profits were $1,000. She gave the fundraiser to MFE for Science from Scientists, and we're looking to huge profits. Circle on your calendar, Sunday, October 18th, remember, parent Mr. Steele is having Pauline Wells and Brendan Grimes, a graduate of Milton High, do a concert, and all donations will go to music in the Milton Public Schools. Circle on your calendar, because we won't be together again until the 21st. October 20th, golf and tennis at the Wellsden Golf Course. And if you don't play golf, or you don't play tennis, or you're a Milton Public School teacher who can't leave school to play golf or tennis, you can all join together at the golf course in the afternoon, late afternoon for the dinner. And today was very successful as a result of your Transportation Subcommittee Walk and Ride to School event. And the night after, we're all together, circle on your calendar, October 22nd is our Milton Library Gala. And I want to recognize the Milton Library because they have arranged to have Alice Hoffman address all of our middle and high schoolers in the Winchester Auditorium after school. So that's really extending the Milton Library, extending their gala to all Milton middle and high schoolers.
And that's the Milton Library Foundation.
Oh, excuse me, that we both serve on.
Right.
The Milton Library Foundation. And Ms. Verella asked me, as the loyal representative of the PS school, to circle your calendars if you're a PS parent or a PS advocate. Unfortunately, on the same night, we work hard not to have these conflicts, the PS fling at the Who's-a-Club on...
The Esther, on...
Oh, excuse me.
On Avenue Street in Dorchester.
I would have sent them to the wrong place if Ms. Verella wasn't here. At Esther's on October 22nd, the PS fling with all profits going directly back to the PS Middle School students. And my personal favorite, the Monster Dash on Sunday, October 25th. Thank you. And tomorrow, those MCAS results will be mailed to the homes of every now fourth grader, sixth grader, and 10th grader for science, and every 11th grader, their English and math scores will be arriving at their homes. So thank you very much.
Do we have the field trip?
Oh, we do. Oh, excuse me.
That's right.
I'm going to turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Sheehan for your annual field trip vote.
Thank you, Superintendent Gormly. We have a school committee policy that provides guidelines for teachers seeking approval for field trips that are out of state or overnight. And while we do not have any new proposals for field trips this year, we do have two that are included in your memo and your packet. We have two field trips that are what we call annual field trips. And there is a field trip policy addendum that asks us to provide annual information to the school committee on field trips that have been previously authorized or approved. So these two field trip proposals before you are actually, actually have been already approved, but because they are annual field trips, we're providing the information that is required in accordance with the policy, and the information does not change from year to year. So one of them was submitted by Dr. Noreen Diamond Burdette. The other one was submitted by Mark Colwayne. Dr. Burdette is bringing students to Washington DC in the spring, and Mark Colwayne is planning a trip with his outdoors club to New Hampshire. They will be using a Dartmouth College Outing Club's lodge, and the information is here. And again, while it was previously approved, we are required to share this information with you each year, just to keep you updated on the annual trips.
So we're not seeking a vote on that, it's previously approved?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Really quick, did we always get all this data on these? I don't remember seeing all, I'm just saying, I really appreciate seeing this, especially the safety plans and all that, and I don't remember seeing it before. So I appreciate it.
Well, you know, what we did was, we took from the policy, all of the categories for information, and it just helps us be more informed about what's happening.
This is great.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and Superintendent Gormly. Moving on to item five on the agenda of the chair's report, the first issue relates to a vote that we took back in May, on May 20th. And that was to establish a, what we called a Strategic Issues Committee. And that language was, I think it's fair to say, really structured and put together at the meeting itself. And as Dr. Donahue and I were reviewing that and trying to come up with a, the package to populate the committee and establish the committee, it occurred to us that there may be some things missing from that charge. Primarily, that charge that we came up with on May 20th appeared more to be a gap analysis. What are we not doing now that we need to be addressed? And so it was more of a present-day and backward-looking gap analysis as opposed to a long-range, forward-looking group. And so Dr. Donahue and I have worked together to try to address that. So I'll turn it over to you, Kevin, if you want to elaborate a bit.
Thank you. That was primarily the impetus behind some of the language changes. I think the biggest thing that we were looking for was, we wanted to establish a committee that really permitted us to look forward and sort of envision where we want the schools to be in five years, 10 years, 15 years. And to give that committee sort of the breadth of a charge to do that, and not sort of limit their scope in terms of evaluating what we're not doing. And it sounds like semantics, but I think in terms of the perspective of the committee, it's an improvement. I think the other thing that we wanted to make sure that we did when we put together the committee was that we were not only looking forward at where we wanted the schools to be and all the positive things that were going on, but also some of the potential, I hate to use the word negative, but concerns that crop up from time to time in the district that could benefit from sort of a long-range view on things. And that this language, I think, permits the committee to look to that goal and to identify some of those concerns. But what it does not do is it is not a strategic planning committee in the sense that we discussed about six months ago, which has a very specific, if you will, jargony definition, which was not what we were trying to do. That may be something that comes out of it. I don't think it will, but that may be a recommendation of this committee, but this is not a strategic planning committee in the sense of a capital S, capital P, strategic plan.
So the language for the proposal is just to state what it is, to establish an advisory subcommittee, the purpose of which is to work with the school administration, staff, members of the committee, and others to identify long-range goals and innovations for the district, as well as potential concerns, and to recommend to the school committee a process for achieving those goals or addressing those concerns. And so that's the proposal that Kevin and I have come up with. And procedurally, I think what we would do is have a vote to rescind the language that we voted on May 20th, that language that you have in the first sheet in front of you. And then if that vote is positive, then we would move to, for a vote on establishing this advisory subcommittee for long-range planning and identifying potential concerns. So... So.
So I'll move that we rescind our initial language from May 20th.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any, for any discussion? All those in favor? And so now, do we have a motion on the newly proposed committee?
I'll move that we adopt the new language presented this evening for this advisory subcommittee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. The next agenda item is for goal responsibilities. Now that we have four school committee goals, it strikes me that it's good to have an individual or a committee be a point person for those goals, so someone or some group is accountable for that and accountable for bringing it forward. I used to work with a CEO whose view of management like this is that you need one throat to choke. So, in that spirit, in that spirit, what I'd like to do is to assign a point person for each of these goals. The first goal is the Fuller kindergarten goal that you voted in my absence last week, and I'd like to assign Ms. Padera to be responsible for that and for bringing that forward. The second is the goal to develop a plan to assess current and future space needs, and I'd like to assign that to the facilities subcommittee. And Mr. Walker is the chair of that subcommittee, and he's aware of that. And then, the third goal is to review and investigate new methods of effective communication by the school committee and the administration with recommendations by spring 2016, and I'd like to have Ms. Varela, if she would, to be the point person on that. And then finally, I want to hold on the last one because I think I just need confirmation on that one. The last goal being develop a strategy to address sped proficiency gaps by June 2016. I just need confirmation on an assignment of that. So that's just for the purposes of making sure we don't lose sight of these goals and that we bring them forward over the next several months. Ms. Bagley Jones?
I thought we had a goal about the health and wellness curriculum. Yeah.
From last year.
That's the 2000, that's the-
Right. But I thought we rolled in last year's to, remember that whole discussion?
The 2014, 2015 goals.
Right.
Right. So the question is, do we assign people to those goals as well? A lot of those goals are really district goals as well, so I guess we can do that. I guess we can assign a school committee member to shepherd those. So I'll look through those and do that for the next meeting.
And will we have discussion about that, or are those assignments from you?
Well, I mean, we can have discussion about it. I mean, I looked at it more as a subcommittee view that I would just assign it, but, and if anyone's interested, certainly, you know, just let me know.
I would definitely want to work on the health and wellness one.
Okay. So we'll look at those goals with, and I don't think that, I don't think we had anyone assigned to those or any group assigned to those last year, so that'll be a new thing.
Some of those are, excuse me.
No, no, please.
Some of those are completed or, you know.
Right. 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 Ms. Varela.
I just wanted to know, would you, just as follow-up, just put it in writing of who has what and just with the goals of who's assigned to it so that we just can make a map and plan of all that execution?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, super. Thank you.
And we need to, we need to, and we'll have for the next meeting, just the, we went through kind of an elaborate discussion on how they were going to be, how the goals are going to be listed and how they were going to be presented, and so we'll have that for the next meeting as well. Okay. The next is finance subcommittee report.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Pavlicek, because I believe we have a vendor warrant to approve.
We do have a vendor warrant. It's warrant number 15, dated October 8th, 2015, and it's the amount of $73,288.44.
What was the date again?
October 8th.
So we've moved to approve vendor warrant 15, the date of October 8th, and the amount of $73,288.44.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And one abstention, myself. So 4-0-1. And that's all we have for vendor warrants.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When's the next finance subcommittee meeting? Has it been decided yet because of the holiday and then the-
No, we're actually waiting for approval on that because there were some conflicts. So we were sent down an email today, and we're just waiting for confirmation.
I'll notify you when you know when the next finance subcommittee is.
Approval of minutes. We have the minutes from August 26th, 2015. Let me see if I have those. So, yeah. Minutes from August 26th, 2015. So I'll move approval of the minutes for August 26th, 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor? And next, we have the minutes for September 9th, 2015. I'll move approval of the minutes for September 9th, 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Donahue.
In the final paragraph of the first page, the first line, I didn't know if we wanted to clarify. I believe that Dr. Hare was invited. For the first two days, where pupils were not in attendance, I don't know how to make that clarification.
First two days of-
First two professional development days.
That'll be the first two professional development days. Got that, Mara? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? With motion for, so the friendly amendment is accepted, and all those in favor of the minutes as amended?
Kristen?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's unanimous.
It wasn't gross. Can I read it?
Thank you. Citizen speak topic response. We don't have anything. Next meeting agenda items. I already, we already have, we may put on the agenda a time for questions regarding the diversity report that we received tonight. Ms. Bagley Jones had asked at the prior meeting for a brief tutorial, I think is maybe the best word, on the budget and finance that Mr. Pavlicek will put together. So we'll put that on for the next meeting. Dr. Donahue.
Policy subcommittee will have, I believe, one policy.
Policy subcommittee.
We may have health and wellness, but I want to wait till a meeting that we're having to see if we're going to wait another time. So I'll let you know if we-
Okay. Great. All right. Anything further in terms of next meeting agenda items? Are we going to have transportation next time, or, well, you can let me know, Sheila.
When's our next meeting in?
It's the 21st.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, have to see.
All right. Citizen speak. I don't think we have anything. So now, we will move to go into executive session. And so, I will move to go into executive session for the purposes, for the purpose of discussing negotiations with the MEA and AFSMI, the discussion of which in open session could be detrimental to the position of the district in negotiations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Not to return to open session.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pavlicek. Not to return to open session. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Ms. Padera?
Yes.
And Dr. Donahue.
Yes.
We are adjourned for the purpose of going into executive session, not to return to open session, and we will see you again at 7:00 PM on October 21st. Thank you very much.
Thank you.